Okay, so welcome to the ordinance subcommittee meeting of March 26th, 5:15. It looks like all of us are here. We don't have any minutes, so I'll open it for public speak time. Anything that's not on our agenda.
Just state your name and address on the card, please.
My name is Alex Koalik. I live on 19 Lyman Street. I was really here to just try to get more information on what direction I can go to get more information, present to you. I know that eventually I'll have to bring it to the full board, but I was hoping to get information so when I get asked a question, it's better than no, no the answer to the question before it gets asked. So, what's going on on Lyman Street is we have a truck exclusion. It's been there for years since 94 or something like that. River Valley is going to be moving in, and the way they designed their building is that they're going to come in short distance off of Lyman Street and turn in to their loading dock, which is not a problem. I've been to the planning board meetings, spoke with River Valley's, the planning board, put together some things that I'm pretty satisfied with what they said they were going to do. But it's still the idea of keeping the trucks off of the street. What I'm looking to do are two things. First one would be, right now there's signs at both ends of the street. One is a circle with a slash through a truck, and then underneath it says, "Two and a half ton capacity" or something like that. It used to be two-worded signs, and no one ever wrote them. So, I purchased signs with the circles with the slash. I purchased those, brought them to the highway department, spoke with the state ahead of time, and they said, "The town can change those signs whenever they need." So, I purchased the signs, and the signs were put up, and it eliminated more trucks. There's still a lot of trucks that come through. It's difficult to get a police officer to sit there all day and wait for a truck. The agreement that we had for a long time is if I can get a name on the truck, phone number, or something like that, call dispatch, they'll call it, and try to event, and get in touch with the trucker and tell him to stop. What I've brought, what I saw, and what I spoke to people that live in North Hampton over by the Coca-Cola plant, there's a number of streets, both ends of the streets, because they track their trailers or cutting from, they drove, they drove through the neighborhoods and they have, North Hampton has changed it to where they have the no truck signs throughout, all the way to Market Street everywhere, and they have the truck, the circle with the slash, and underneath it says, "Three hundred dollar fine." What I would like to do, see if I can get them, is, and I spoke with the police chief, and he made the same recommendation, come and see you people, is to ask you about changing the sign on the bottom, let me see if you can find that, it's in my picture, the sign on the bottom that says, "Two and a half tons, carry capacity." Speaking with the state, speaking with car dealerships, any vehicle with tandem wheels in back has a capacity of carrying two and a half tons. I'm not looking to eliminate the pickup trucks, but there are awful lot of landscapers, good for them if they can make a living doing it, but those are one-ton trucks. Usually when someone drives a one-ton truck, they don't need to have a special license. So, I am pretty sure, and I've spoken with people, they actually say that their vehicle is not a truck, because they don't have a special license to drive this vehicle. So, they don't know that that is in that weight category. By putting the three hundred dollar fine, I'm sorry, close away.
No, 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 you're good.
By putting the three hundred dollar fine on there, I think it's going to eliminate more of the vehicles from coming through. So, that's the first part of what I'd like to do. I'd like to come back to another meeting, put it on my name on the agenda, and present it to you people. Can I bring it right to you, or do I have to go through the?
So, one of us, so I'm just going to tell you the process of it. So, one of us can actually bring it forward to the, to the full council, then it'll get on our agenda.
Okay.
And, and so, you, you know, it doesn't, I don't, it doesn't matter which one of us.
Walk it over to my house.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's really-
So, you want to write something out, just say?
Yep, just like a little statement. I mean, I could even use the email that you sent, but maybe if you just write, like, a, you know, this is what I'd like to do.
Okay. And the second part is, okay, there is a sign at the end line in the North Hampton Circle, and that's one of the places I would like to have the three hundred dollar fine. I spoke with the police chief, he said, fine with him, anything to deter the vehicles. I'm just saying it, Florence Road. What I was hoping also was maybe to get another sign what, where the trucks would be coming out, um, rimmed out. Like I said, they've designed an intersection, that intersection where they exit onto Lyman Street, they're making it so it has a little swale to it, to make it difficult for the trucks to go to the left, and they're going to be signs that they're putting up on there, about no left turn, truck exclusion, and they're going to put it on their, their letterhead to their suppliers that say, "Lyman Street is, has a exclusion on it, do not use Lyman Street." And it's been put into the planning board's application, right, so they would be somewhat responsible for the trucks going.
Well, I think if you send that email with kind of a description, we could word it in such a way that we could look at multiple issues on Lyman Street related to trucks.
Okay. So, what I'm kind of looking for is changing the bottom part of the sign.
Yep.
Oh, that's what North Hampton has. And ours now have a wording-
Can I, can I put a picture of that?
Sure.
Do you have to fill in the record? Can you show us, just the description?
One at a time.
Okay, this is what's at the end of the street right now. Okay. And I would like to change that, because that is, like I said before, it used to be wording on top of it, and there was no sign like that. Nobody read the signs, everybody just went through. So, like I said, I'd like to change it to the three hundred dollar. Chief said, "Why stop at three hundred?" Okay, so I'll put something, and-
Just shoot the email over and-
Do you have anything in our ordinance is now about that street and a fine?
That's, that's what we can check, is part of the process.
There, if the police catch someone on the street, they can take it, they can take their truck.
Given our ordinance is specifically has dollar amounts lined to exceptions like that.
Yeah, so, since it's public speak-
Oh, I can't, I'm sorry, we can't have a conversation.
Yeah, so we'll, just send that email, and we'll, we'll put it on the agenda.
When is your next ordinance?
Our subcommittee, well, our next council meeting, um, is the 3rd of April. So, if you send it soon, if you send it before Thursday-
Yeah, Thursday?
Thursday. Send it before Thursday. So, we can send it on Thursday before to get-
Our deadlines.
Yeah.
Okay. So, I came to the right news?
Yes.
You're good.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Bye, guys. Okay, so now we can, we'll move past public speak, and we'll go back into the consideration of a welcoming community trust ordinance. So, there is a couple seats over here for people. Just, we did try to get the, the bigger room, but school committee's up there tonight, so this was the only one that we could get. So, apologize for the tight quarters. So, you know, what was it? Two weeks ago, we had a pretty extensive meeting on this, and I think we had some discussion, we had a lot of input from the public. I would say that, you know, we definitely, we heard what everybody had to say. And, you know, I'm not opposed to people having another go. I would say, you know, maybe if you're just repeating the same thing you said last time, keep it really brief. If you have something new to add, that would be great. And if you haven't spoken yet, I think that would be great as well. You know, and I think there was a couple things that we were looking for after our last meeting, and it sounds like we were able to get a little resolution. I know that the chief has weighed in, and so I guess we can go from there. Nazar Kana, do you want to take it away? Do you have any, any thoughts before we get started?
Uh, no.
Okay. Too much dapple?
Excuse me, where do things stand now?
Okay, so, so just as we go, it just makes you remember to say your, say your name and address for the record, so.
Oh, same, the car. I live at 15 Child Street, and a lot of things have happened in the last few weeks, so I just, I'm sorry, I just wanted a kind of recap after where things stand now, before we move on. I think it'll cut down the amount of discussion that we will need.
So, what we discussed last time, and I'll, and feel free to jump in, is, so this would be basically an ordinance that would solidify the current policy of the East Hampton Police Department. It would also add some reporting that currently doesn't happen. And, and really, that's the concise version.
It will not apply to any other?
It would, it would apply to all city departments. So, the school department-
Just wanted to clarify, because I know the emphasis is bound to police.
Right, but it, it would apply to all.
Okay.
Any other?
No, I would just echo the intention of creating a citywide ordinance around this issue, and the last being the police to share their pretty broad policy, which pretty much is, runs parallel to sort of the proposed one.
And, as I understand it, it has to go through review process, not only through the lawyer, but also through the new committee that has been formed?
The new committee that has been formed could take a look at it. They are not required, the, there's no mandate for them to look at it, but, you know, the city's council would look at it before it went to the, you know, there was a public hearing. But as far as process, if we decide to approve this, then it would go to the full council for a public hearing.
One more time?
One more time. Yep, so it would be another opportunity for people to, to speak. Any other? Sir?
Steve Letupski, I'm on 18 Lyman Street. I've, I've lived at 18 Lyman Street since 1976, for 43 years, so I'm kind of a townie. I've seen a lot of things happen in East Hampton. Lots of things I don't agree with, but accept, because this is America. I'm 150% for legal immigration. I, you know, they, you get a booklet, you go through a naturalization process, you have to learn a little bit about our democracy, the three branches of our democracy, the pledge of allegiance, you know, booklet of information that you have to know, and then you become a naturalized citizen. You have to go through a physical, very important, and then you become a naturalized citizen of the United States. To welcome people that don't go through this process is a mistake. They don't have to take a physical, we have trouble with the mumps coming back, with the measles coming back, those diseases were eradicated from this country, and now we're having this trouble again with, with who knows what, polio, you know, I don't know. It's not good. Yeah, I got, I had a bunch of stuff I was going to say, but, so, 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 East Hampton goes through, goes through these, like, programs, and we're spending lots, lots of monies, like, I don't, I don't agree with, with a lot of the things that go on. Do you want me to talk about that? It's kind of-
I would say, try to keep it as close as you can to the words.
Yeah, yeah, okay, okay, but, all right, so, so, this welcoming, this welcoming-
Welcoming trust ordinance?
Yeah, the welcoming trucks ordinance, ordinance is going to cost the taxpayers more money. Like, these people get, get free education, free healthcare. Who's paying for that? You and me that pay the taxes. You know, we can't afford this. Like, when I came here in 76, well, I didn't buy the house until I was here in 77. Yeah, my, my taxes were cheap, that was a real good reason for me to come to East Hampton. It's not that way anymore. It's not cheap at all. Oh, sorry. No, no trouble. I just think that it's too much of a burden for, like, we are welcoming people here. We are, we are very, like, this is America. We, anybody can come in, we have, we have a beautiful town, we have College Highway going from Smith College to Yale University. The people have to come through here, use our, use our facilities, our restaurants, our gas stations, coming down Route 10, College Highway. We have many facilities for people. We have, like, like nightclubs and restaurants, and everyone is welcome, from Springfield, Holyoke, I don't care, East Hampton, anywhere. You can go to these places. And we don't need an ordinance and, like, a branding to make, to make this possible. Like, this ordinance saying that we are welcoming is just inviting these illegal, criminal, illegal, what do you understand, criminal, illegal immigrants coming into this town, and, and, like, having them, like, cost us money through crime, through, that's enough.
Could I speak to Steve, please?
Yes, please.
Please.
I mean, just generally, I would say, and-
Do you have a comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
Just after this comment, could I just make a request to the chair, let me try to limit each person to one thought, and then-
Yeah.
Back and forth, does it count?
Yeah, yeah, let's do that.
As a historian's thief, what I know is that one of the great things that FDR did in his cabinet is to establish a public policy whereby immigrants who were coming into this country at a time when there were many were, had public health services for the very reason you're concerned, that there was a possibility of epidemics spreading through the city. So, they spent a considerable amount of money, but far less than if they had to treat everyone hiding in the shadows. The kind of thing that we're proposing here, I'm a supporter, as you know, of the welcoming ordinance, is that people come out of the shadows, can be helped if they need to be, do not put anyone at risk, follow in the traditions of this country that we have had since the 1940s, and keep them from being a burden on the city. In addition, all the places you mentioned, that we provide people who come into the area for, are places that they have to pay for things, restaurants, nightclubs, and so forth. So, if they don't come with money, they're not going to use those services. You know, we are not going to be supporting them any more than we were supporting you when you first came to the town.
Any other thoughts?
Thank you so much for your feedback. So, I'm Kay Collins for Carolov, East Hampton. I'm speaking because I was in Ireland for the last meeting, so I would kind of do that. Thank you. And what we're talking about here is not an open invitation to have people that are a criminal element coming into East Hampton. Rather, we're talking about something that will allow people who are potentially victims of crimes, or people that are, let's say, parents, going to a parent-teacher conference, or applying for a permit, to simply go about that business without being proactively asked about their immigration status. So, you could look at somebody and decide that they're an immigrant, they may not even be one, right? What we're saying is that in East Hampton, we're not going to, as any city agency in East Hampton, are not going to proactively ask people who are not committing a crime about their immigration status, and not proactively report them to immigration for doing nothing more than working at a, working at a farm, or working in a restaurant, or raising their children, right? So, we're just not proactively asking them that question. That's what we're talking about here. And the police chief and the mayor were hoping that legislation on the state level would render it moot point to have this kind of ordinance in East Hampton, because both of them and the police chiefs' union were supporters of the state-level legislation that was very similar to what we're proposing here. And the police chief has spoken many times, I wish he were here to speak to us today, but he's spoken many times about wanting to adopt a community policing model, where people that were victims, if somebody were robbed, or attacked, or raped, that they would not be afraid to go to the police to report that, or to any other applicable city agency. So, we're speaking, I'm speaking personally, from a place of compassion. For the police department, right now on the state level, the Lund decision is something that the police already go by, which says that unless there is a criminal warrant for somebody, the police are not responsible for holding them any longer than they would for any other civil infraction that they might have committed. So, we're just going to hold them for whatever time it is to investigate what they might have may or may not have done, and then we're going to let them go like we would anybody else that's not committed a major crime, right?
He seems like he's talking.
I'm almost, well, you seem like you had questions.
Oh, yeah, I do.
And, and it's both to the council, and also to you, because you had some specific points that you brought up. So, thank you for letting me talk.
Oh, certainly, certainly.
Appreciate it. So, what this will do is, is take it away from identifying the police specifically, and expand it to other agencies within East Hampton. And, and the police are not directed by this ordinance to ignore any criminal violations.
What is the reason for having an ordinance?
So, I think, I think instead, since you already spoke, I'm just going to, I'm going to cut you off right there, and I'm just going to see if anybody else, and, because I, what I really want to encourage is, actually, what I'm going to enforce, is that there's no, we're not going to have a back and forth.
I understand, I understand.
So, we're going to make our statements, and then we're going to have other people make statements, and then if there's questions, I think the questions should be directed to the subcommittee, and we can do our best to field those.
And you can talk later, too.
Yes. Good. Is there anybody else that would like to, to speak? I, I think just a quick clarification, just to be clear, it's something, you know, the outbreaks that we've been experiencing are, have not been linked to any sort of immigration, it's people that are choosing not to vaccinate. So, I just want to make sure that that's understood. So, please.
Emily Lewis, 23, how's it going? I just want to make a point that a lot of other countries have higher vaccination rates than the United States, not lower vaccination rates. So, chances are you might be better off going to one of those countries, and that's what you're worried about. So, I would recommend this.
Head up from Austin, you stand in front of the border.
Can you just repeat your name again, sir?
OTT. Excuse me?
OTT, yes.
I'm wondering, despite our political differences, if we'll come down to a, a town vote, and we vote, put this on the ballot, and have everybody vote for it?
I mean, that's, that would be, that's not something I'm going to be a proponent of, and, and I think if that was something that you wanted to do, that, as a citizen, that's your right to do that.
You as a council can't?
Oh, we could.
You could, if, I mean-
I'm just not interested in that.
That's your, that's your position?
That's my position.
So, you speak for everybody?
Um, no, I just speak as the chair of ordinance. I, like, there's a lot of ordinances that come before us that, you know, could be considered contentious. This one I don't really consider-
Speak in your precinct?
I speak, yeah.
I live in your precinct.
Okay.
Don't speak for me?
Fair enough, but I, but I am speaking now, so if you wouldn't mind not interrupting me.
Sure, go ahead.
So, this, this is something that is solidifying current policy. It's, it's not outrageous. This is basically saying what we currently do makes sense, and we think it makes sense to codify as an ordinance.
It's already going on, why do we have to have-
Exactly. So, what's the problem?
Do we have to, well, let's, let's be like North Hampton, let's-
No, we're not, we're not like North Hampton.
Or is it a, is it a pre-, a pre-election against the Trump election?
I don't think so.
Is it, and I'm not, I didn't vote for Trump, I understand that.
I just think it's, you know, from my perspective as the chair, and as, after, you know, looking at this from multiple angles, after seeing, you know, all of the controversy that surrounded different iterations of this, this is, this is basically a, from what I can tell, a very close estimation of what the current policy is, and putting it into ordinance. So, that, in order to change the policy, it would just, it would take a little bit more effort. So, we're saying that we think that this policy, which the police chief supports, the mayor supports, you know, is a good idea, because it encourages people, for example, human trafficking. You know, we've heard a lot of human, human trafficking stories where people, women are brought into this country, and, and they're, they're kept in terrible situations under the fear of, you know, being deported, or being, you know, found out. So, they can't, they can't seek help. And I think that this is something that can help, you know, put a little light on that, those types of situations, where, you know, people don't have to be afraid to go to the police. And, and for me, that doesn't seem, you know, so contentious that it would need to go to a town-wide vote. It seems like we're solidifying something we already do.
What would they be afraid of, what would they be afraid of?
If they, so if you were, if you were an illegal-
Oh, okay, if you use the word illegal.
So, if you are not, not someone who had, you know, full citizenship, then you might be concerned that if you went to the police, that they might hold you because you're not a citizen.
That's unfortunate.
No. So, I mean, I think that's, that's what, so far, that's what I have learned from this.
Is that in the staff or in town, or anything, knocking on doors, asking people?
Not to my knowledge.
Thank you for letting us know.
Yep, no problem.
Thank you.
Thanks, yep. Anybody else?
Mariel Nuzio, 18 Lyman Street, East Hampton. Thank you for the opportunity to address this issue. Again, I respectfully disagree with your position. I feel that the wording of the ordinance, in particular, those that we protect, as I mentioned last time, are already protected under pillar rights and other anti-discrimination laws. So, in, for me in particular, this is all about protecting the illegal aliens that might be residing in our city. And as far as coming to the police, we know we have those UFRIs that are available for their protection, and prevent some from being deported when they're working with the police station over an issue of a crime. I just feel that these welcoming city slash sanctuary city ordinances encourages an open border type of situation in our country. I think it just encourages more illegal immigration into our country. And we've seen this year, wave after wave of caravan coming, another one on its way, already all knowing that they'll be protected once they're here, will be possibly afforded the rights of American citizens as well. I just don't think that's a good policy. I feel we should vet the people who are here in the country for our own safety. I personally don't think we need to codify this. We have a resolution, we already have policies in place. Codifying it labels us, and I believe sets us up for potential lawsuits. And if you have a chance to run it by the city's solicitor, or if you have a friend or virgin- or virgin of the ordinance, but I'd be curious to know what the policy would be. Uh, the other thing that was on my mind is, uh, two weeks ago, you told a story about your student, who is fifteen years old, come in, you know, I've been worried about that child ever since I heard the story, I'm concerned. And, um, at that same meeting, we also talked about how employers should be held responsible for employing the people that are illegal. Almost everyone in the room agreed on that, there should be ramifications for people that encourage it from employment. And I thought, well, how can we on one hand have a fifteen-year-old working three jobs to pay for his immigration attorney, and then hold those employer legally responsible for aiding that child? So we put American citizens in terrible positions who, out of the goodness of their heart, would help a child who, under not their own circumstances here, you know, their parents made it, this is before them to send them here. Um, it, it's really, really difficult and complicates, you know, our system and enforcement of these kind of resolutions. So I had concerns about that, you know, what are we gonna do for the children who are undocumented and can't work legally? So puts them in a, a terrible position. Um, and, oh, see, I think first, uh, what, I think, come back. So, um, also, the ordinance, in my particular interpretation of it, seems that putting up roadblocks for our police department to cooperate with ICE, in other words, with the detainee issue, and, and, um, I, I really feel that if ICE asks for a detainee on, on a particular person they might have in custody, that we should cooperate with that. Uh, I think those are any points, so thank you.
Thank you.
For the opportunity.
Do you wanna talk about, if nobody, do you wanna talk about what the chief said? Cause as it relates to the police, I would defer to the chief.
Um, did you guys, did you receive an email, or did?
Yeah.
Okay, so does anyone wanna take a point on this?
Yeah, neither.
I, I spoke with him earlier, so I'd, uh.
Oh, okay. Why don't you share what you spoke to him about?
So, um, I think generally, and I, I mean, so I think that he agrees that his policy in terms of creating a citywide ordinance to run in parallel with what the police already have as their specific policy, he doesn't have any disagreements. He did have some, uh, concerns about some of the wording, and I can kinda go, as you probably received in the email, and I talked to him about that, we reviewed that, and I didn't have any particular concerns with his concerns, and I think he makes a good points. Um, so, and, so just going straight through, uh, I think the first one is section thirteen slash two order, article B, and he recommended, um, adding the word "or required by law" at the end, um, because, for instance, um, firearms licensing, for instance, uh, that's, it's required that you are a US citizen, uh, it's a felony to be an undocumented, um, immigrant in the possession of a firearm. And so when we talk about how this, um, this, uh, ordinance potentially, the goal of it is to increase community safety, right, by allowing people to come forward and report crimes, but at the same time, if, if this, this can proactively prevent crimes, i.e. by, by, by asking where it's appropriate, uh, in, in the sense of.
Where it's required by law.
Firearms, yeah, it's required by law. So for instance, if it's illegal for an undocumented, um, immigrant to own a firearm, we certainly don't want to facilitate that. We don't wanna facilitate illegal firearm, firearm ownership.
And, and I would say, I would add that, I mean, even if we, even if we didn't add that, which I think it would make sense, that getting the firearms processed, the, the licensing requirement would require them to be a citizen so that, I mean, they wouldn't be able to get, it's not like we could circumvent the licensing requirements for firearms.
Correct. And then I, I had asked, and this kinda parlay's into the question I asked last time about the, the fingerprinting method that they have in their policy, I forgot the name, but basically, you can't circumvent that. If someone comes in, they're printed either for, for firearm, for firearm application, or when they actually commit a crime, which, again, I'll reinforce it, but the goal of this ordinance is not to, is not to prevent appropriate enforcement for people who commit crimes.
Right.
It's to protect people who haven't committed crimes, or are victims of crimes, and not have, uh, immigration officials involved, when they're basically trying to either protect themselves, or protect their family, or protect other people in the community. And, um, so, um, um, there's no way to say, to create, for instance, and I would support creating a policy to say we don't wanna fingerprint people.
Right.
We fingerprint people.
Yeah.
Um, and those, and those fingerprinting, that fingerprinting is automatically submitted to federal, um.
That's a federal program called ASCOM.
Right, exactly. Yeah, correct, so.
So this doesn't circumvent that at all?
No, and I'm not saying, I'm, yeah, and I'm, yeah, and I just wanted to clarify that, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so item D, basically, uh, his comment was just that, um, uh, that's kinda, that's covered essentially in Lund versus Commonwealth, um, and that the last sentence, so I'll just, I'll just read item B really quickly. ICE detainers and administrative warrants, no city official, officer, employees of the East Hampton Police Department may arrest or detain individuals solely on the basis of an ICE detainer, ICE administrative warrant. This includes extending the length of detention by any amount of time once an individual is released from local custody or before being transferred to court or amid bail. And his comment on that essentially was that that's, that's already out of the purview of the East Hampton Department. The bail clerk determines the length of detention or release or hold for a warrant, not the police department, so, um.
So does he want that last sentence struck?
Yeah, he says it's inapplicable.
Yeah, he says it's just, it just doesn't, it just doesn't apply, basically. And I think it could, it would look, it's kind of like.
And we could reference Lund v. Commonwealth, there is.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, to actually, yes, to discuss, to discuss, um, case precedent.
Do you want me to go through the last two?
Oh, I can, I can, I was just like, right, right.
No, no, it's fine, I just didn't know if you wanted to.
Are you making comments when you're?
Well, um, let us, let us go through this, and then we can, then we will, yes.
And then, uh, E, um, federal request for information, um, n, uh, it's important to note that he wanted to make sure we replace federal officer with ICE officer, because there's, there's, uh, many non-immigration officers at the police interact, FBI, DEA, et cetera, uh, that have nothing to do with immigration.
US attorney.
Yeah, US, exactly. So he just wanted to make sure that federal officer was replaced with ICE officer, uh, following information. The reason we do this is the US Attorney's, oh, you probably have this, David, I'm just looking. The reason we do this is the US Attorney's Office, DEA, FBI, and ATF on criminal cases and exchange information, those criminal investigations. So again, that's just exchange criminal information, not exchange of immigration information. Um, then item F, basically, talks about deputizing local officials and not to deputize them for, um, the purposes of creating immigration officers, and he's certainly not interested in that.
He basically said if he had the extra people, they wouldn't go toward helping ICE, they'd go toward the DEA, helping the DEA, cause that's where the problem is.
Right.
Right. Um, he basically, we talked a little about the reporting requirements, um, and, um, I think the only concern was the word, um, in thirteen four was the word valid, as in valid member law, maybe just to exclude that.
Yep.
Because as much as some of us in this room, or in general, might disagree with some laws, we have to assume they're all.
They are what they are.
They are what they are. So that was his only input. I think, I, I think, I, I don't think he disagreed with me, that generally, he, he supports this as a citywide policy, especially in regards to the schools. One thing we did discuss is, I spoke with, I asked, um, uh, Chair, Chair of the person Derby's, what is the school's policy around immigration right now?
And I, well, I believe that they passed a, um, it was either a resolution, or it was a policy, um, they debated it for quite a while. I believe they passed it last, the year before last. Um, so, but that's just my recollection.
I think that's just important to kinda check, especially with the real applicability, especially in the presence of a police policy that basically runs parallels to this ordinance, is if the, if the intent is to kind of create a citywide ordinance, and we make sure that we just know that from the, from the process. And then, um, yeah, I think generally, I mean, his policy is already is what it is, we read it last time, um, and so this just kind of extends what the department is already doing, um, to, uh, the rest of the city. And again, he reinforced the fact that the purpose of this is, once again, to be able to allow people to come forward and feel safe reporting crimes if they're other, either a victim of or observer of crimes, and in no way, um, protects individuals who are committing crimes. So that's pretty much.
Okay. You quick?
Yes. Carolyn Coochey, one of three main states, who are my state council area.
Okay.
I believe it's a Lund, but, you know, one reason why a valid question doesn't make sense to me is that these, these issues are complicated, and I've been following it for a few years, and I, it's not likely. Uh, Lund was a decision of our Massachusetts Supreme Judicial Court, saying there's nowhere in the Massachusetts Constitution that supports an ICE container being honored in this kind of criminal matter, it's, that no standing. But when they issued that, they also called for legislation to, to be put in place, because their decision could be changed by legislation, and various legislation has come up and not passed, or there are prospective things. And it is complicated. And, um, you know, a resource person that we had is a justice on, uh, he's, he's a justice, and I know he, he followed, he's a, he's a on Lund, so. Can I hold on? Do you wanna hear?
Please, absolutely.
Sure. Yes, the.
That's good. He can't.
Doesn't, yes, he can.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, he can totally talk, absolutely. So just need to say your name and address for the record, and that's.
Sure. My name's, uh, Jeff Molotino, um, I used to live on Nineteenth Pleasant Green, but I actually now live in our ham tonight, uh, Parkstead Road.
Sure.
Um, uh, so the, on the issue of Lund, um, the State Supreme Court just ruled that the police departments and, um, uh, general, anybody who takes anybody into custody in Massachusetts doesn't have the authority to hold somebody on the basis of an ICE detainee request. Again, this is not a criminal offense, not a criminal warrant, this is just on suspicion of being undocumented. Um, and, um, for those who are concerned, the, the list that ICE passes people through in order to see whether they should be detained or not has about a ten, up to, has been noted to have up to a ten percent chance of error. So they've actually accidentally incarcerated or detained American citizens, American citizens, particularly Puerto Rican folks, um, and so it doesn't go without errors. And this is part of the reason why Lund was decided. I mean, the other issue regarding Lund was that, um, as Carolyn mentioned, uh, it, it is the discretion of every municipality, of every county, and the state ultimately, uh, to determine how they will deal with the detention of people, or the request to detain people on the basis of immigration. So East Hampton can say, yes, we will honor detainee requests, and Holyoke can say, no, we won't. Um, and so it's really up to each municipality to make that decision.
Thank you.
Alexandria Mahan, well, uh, some new questions, East Hampton. A question, just follow-up, as John just said, so do the police indeed in this town, will they allow ICE to come in when it's, again, someone who is, who has done something illegal and their time is concerned here, but ICE is saying, wait, 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 we need him, uh, for, you know, hold him for twenty-four hours, so we get all our paperwork to you? I don't understand, there, there seems to be a, a big gap between helping out our federal government, which hopefully is, is trying to protect us from, you know, harming, you know, people that are harmful to us illegally. Well, obviously, there's legal people that, uh, have the laws for them. So I'm just saying, just asking that question. Will our police allow ICE to come in and take care of what the federal government has allowed?
Well, I mean, I think the short answer to that is that, um, we don't hold anybody in East Hampton. So if someone's committed a crime and is arrested, we, we do not hold them. They, they get sent to the county lockup. Um, so, so that is, um, if someone commits a crime, then they're in the system, their fingerprints are sent into the system, they, but we do, we do not hold anybody in East Hampton for more than, I think it's twelve hours, um, I think is maximum.
So there are, I was just saying, David?
Yes.
So, okay.
So that, um, so that question doesn't really necessarily apply to us.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Um, yeah, I think we, I think we talked about that earlier, just wanna make sure.
Did it, I know, we can't hold.
Well, the bail clerk, the bail clerk is the person who determines detention, so that's, yeah, we just, we talked about.
I'm sorry.
The, the police, the police don't, the police, um, do not determine the length of detention, the bail clerk does, and that's what Chief Albari was stating before, is that it's, that they're here very briefly, so, yeah.
And, and we don't have, our police department doesn't have the facilities to hold people for an extended period of time. So, um, after, uh, you know, it's generally just a few hours before they get transferred.
Nice, thank you.
Eli, did you have a?
Yes, um, Eli Damon, fourteen Ward Avenue. Um, so I, I'm not really clear about the relevance of, of the chief's, uh, comment about firearms licenses. I mean, if you, you need to be a citizen to get a firearms license, then I would assume you need to submit some documentation of citizenship. And so like go kind of inquiry into, general inquiry into, into an applicant's, uh, you know, um, immigration status, that, it still doesn't seem necessary even in that situation.
Thank you. Any other, um, comments?
Oh, just, I mean, I think the only comment, I spoke to the chief about this earlier, is that it's a requirement of that process. And so to circumvent a piece of that process, which is to inquire about immigration status, and not with the intent of, again, I, I would, I'll actually add a caveat, though, not to inquire with the intent of penalizing for one's immigration status, but that you have to ask in that case.
Right.
Um, so we wouldn't wanna, again, we would, I guess his, his point was, we wouldn't wanna set up a situation where we essentially created a, a venue for someone to illegally own a firearm, because we're not asking, we're not asking, and the, and the legacy application would proceed anyway.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I think it would, it's, I imagine what it is, is it's less of, you know, the, trying, um, that someone would be able to get a license for a firearm, and more that we would be setting up the police department to do something in their normal line of duty that we are saying they can't, that they're not supposed to do. Um, so I, I think that, maybe that piece of it might, um, be what he's concerned about.
I think the firearms was just an equal.
Right, yeah, yeah.
His important point was that we can't just leave it with, to provide a public benefit. He just wanted that extra or required by law.
Yep.
And he used the example of firearms licensing as part of that, but.
And I actually think that's a really good point, is, you know, that we're not, we're not really circumventing anything here, we're saying if it's, if it's, if it's within the state law, we do so, we do it, but otherwise, you know, it's, you know, there's, there's a requirement, we're not recommending that. So, your statement, you, you crafted this one, so I wanna, I wanna make sure I'm not misrepresenting that.
No, that's exactly what it is.
I have a question. I, I wondered, it seems very confusing here, like, like that. Nobody understands, well, the definition of illegal. Is illegal, if it's illegal, does it mean you're breaking the law?
No. I mean, I guess I can kind of answer that, but I'm, I'm a layperson, and there's people that are better than me at answering that question, but I will, I will say that it's not against the law to be, um, and undocumented in the United States. Um, so that, that, I guess that that term, which I used, and, and I guess it's the, um, it is not necessarily accurate, but I would defer to.
It's also not a criminal, it's not a criminal thing, it's a civil violation. It's not even a criminal.
Speeding ticket.
Pardon me?
Like speeding.
Exactly, it's like a speeding ticket.
Mr. Napolitano, can you?
Yeah, sure. So, um, actually, Congress was, um, was challenged with the issue of whether they wanted to make being undocumented, having an undocumented immigration status, um, in the Clinton era, and they declined to do so. So, um, the question of, is somebody be in the United States who is undocumented, their immigration status is, is not that of a citizen, it is explicitly not illegal, criminally illegal. Um, it is illegal if somebody has been deported and they re, enter the country, um, that is the case. But in the United States, sixty percent, roughly by estimation, sixty percent of the people who are here and are considered undocumented, um, were brought in either as, um, as a, a, and are considered undocumented were brought in either as, as a, as a minor or came in through a visa that, that expired.
What's the percentage of that, I'm sorry?
Uh, it's 60%.
I think that's old information, they're, they're coming over the border by the thousands every day.
I think, I think what we'll do is, we'll, like I said, we'll keep it.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. Did you have something you wanted to?
Yes, I was just gonna say, since we don't really know the accurate numbers of how many here are undocumented, I don't know how you come up with a number like that. I mean, the records are not, they don't even keep records on illegals, we can't ask questions about whether or not you're undocumented, they can't be employed, they can't get benefits and all that. So security numbers, and you get special tax numbers from the IRS, so I don't know how you can say 60%, maybe the 60% that are cooperating with our laws, but there's plenty that don't as far as employment laws and residence laws.
Correct.
I mean, we have federal immigration laws, so you're saying that when you come here without obeying our, our due process of entering the country, you're only breaking civil laws, not the federal law.
Yep.
Correct. So the federal law is a civil matter in this case.
Yep.
Okay. So that's fine, still an issue.
Any other comments? I mean, I, I feel comfortable with what, I mean, at the end of the day, for me, like, you know, I, I don't want people to think that we are trying to circumvent our, you know, legal system to protect people that are doing bad things. And, and I think for me, it's about people that are here already, that are, that are almost invisible and that serve all of us probably in some way or another, and that are feeling like they are not empowered to seek the help that they need if they need it. And I, and I think that, that in some way, to me, this does send a message. And it sends a message to people that are doing the right thing, that could be scared, that could be in the shadows, that might be afraid, you know, I keep thinking back to the human trafficking thing, you know, these people that are scared to, to seek help because they're afraid of what's gonna happen. And, you know, if the police chief, which I have no problem with his revisions, if, if he's behind it, I think what that speaks to me is it speaks that there's not going to, we're not gonna be encouraging criminality in any way. And I think that's an important thing to, to put out there, that this is about helping people, not hurting people. So, let's.
Yeah, I would agree, I, you know, the, the point of this from my perspective is not, to, to your point, not to protect criminals, this is the farthest thing from it. I think from my perspective, when you listen to the police and he talks about, I think Kay mentioned it, or someone mentioned it, about community policing, he really means that. He wants the communities to feel open and be able to work with the police in a very collaborative way. And if, if I am an undocumented immigrant and I am raped and I don't say anything, well, now we have a rapist out there and any one of us is the next victim. And there's no point to that. If, if we make this public, because I'm sure none of us, I didn't know that this was the police policy in the great depth that it was, so I'm sure that anyone here who is an undocumented immigrant also doesn't know. And so by being very public about it and being very upfront, I think we, we give that, that message to our community that if you are in this community and you are undocumented in this community and you are a victim of a crime or you are a witness to a crime, we are not going to do anything negative to you, we want you to come forward, we want you to report the data that you have and nothing bad is gonna happen to you. That makes us all safer. And for me, that is the driving force behind this. I'm not looking to get into a dialogue around immigration, that will get us nowhere, we'll go down a wormhole that we'll never get out of. That's not the point of this. The point of this is to make us all safer and to make us all more of a community, and this does that, I think.
So is there any thoughts before we get emotional today?
No, I mean, I think you guys covered it, I think this, again, this is about community safety, I think that in a way, but I, you know, crimes are crimes.
Yeah.
I don't think that people who are undocumented in this country are apparently more likely to commit crimes, I think it's important to try to remove that stigma from this conversation that you kind of, yeah, I mean, I don't want to go down that path either. But I mean, I, I echo what you guys said, that the point here is that so if someone's a victim or someone's a witness to a crime, that we're not, we're preventing perpetrate, the ongoing perpetration of those crimes by a criminal, because they're allowing people to report it without fear of the circumstances for them, you know, potentially reporting that information based on their immigration status. And so I support a safe community. I don't think that this is broadcasting a banner to people who are undocumented to come and seek asylum in East Hampton necessarily, it's telling them that if you do happen to be here, that, oh, that if you do happen to be here, that if you're a victim, then you should report to the police and that's our responsibility, so.
You know, I, I think we're at the point where we could, I could entertain a motion. And then depending on the result of that, which I think I know.
So I asked, just one, just one, why you changed Sanctuary City to Welcome New York? When you want to change it?
So I, I think I can answer that. The Sanctuary City ordinance is, is a very different document than this. So it has different names, it has different wording, and so this is not a Sanctuary City ordinance, this, this would not classify us as a Sanctuary City. You know, I know that there was concern, concerns about possible loss of federal funding, this would not fall under that category, this is, this is a very different ordinance that just solidifies our current community policing policy and, and extends that to like the school department, which I believe they already have a policy as well, so. Does that answer your question? Yep.
I think it's unfair to take a vote without the police here, I, I'd like to talk to them.
Well, this, so I, I can answer that. So this is not the end of this, of this process. And so the way that this works is we have, this is just a subcommittee, the subcommittee will refer to the full city council. And then the full city council will set a public hearing, which is open to the public, so you'd be able to speak. The police chief would definitely be there. And I would say, and I would encourage that in the meantime, reaching out to the chief, he's very open and, and would, I'm sure happy, be happy to speak with you and answer your questions or your concerns. And so I think that, you know, there's still quite a bit of process here. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay. Sir?
My only question about process is at what point do you think we should refer this solicitor?
Um, I, I think as soon as it comes out of a subcommittee.
Right, so go from here, the solicitor, then back to subcommittee to then refer to public hearing or just straight to the?
I, I think it would be, I, I think what we would do is we would just hold off on setting the public hearing until we have a response.
I would agree with that, I would like to see that.
Yep.
Especially, I think Mr. Ahn asked a really good question, and because I would like to, I would like to kind of confirm the wording and, and with the legal opinion that this is not, this is different than the Sanctuary City ordinance, this is Welcome New York ordinance, and there are legal differences, and then also obviously before we put this public hearing to make sure it's all vetted by a legal law.
Yep, I think that would be, it's a, it's a whole different process. Okay.
I will make the motion.
Okay.
To approve this ordinance as amended by what the police chief said and move this to the city solicitor for this review.
And the full city council.
And the full city.
Okay, we'll have a second.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay, so next step, this is gonna go to our city solicitor, it's gonna go to the full city council, and after we get our response from the solicitor, it will go to a public hearing.
It is unlikely to be on the next city council meeting.
Yeah, I would say that's not gonna happen, April 4th. And so we do have a couple of other things on our agenda, so if you are not interested, I don't know how much time you have.
Can I go too?
Oh, sorry, I guess.
Yeah, I'd like to, like, 15-ish.
Well, we only have 15 minutes, I mean, maybe we can just check in on some of the other things? So we're just, we're just, yeah, yeah, so we're just gonna take a two-minute recess while, while if you need to clear out, then just do so efficiently. You don't have to go home, but you can stay here.
Stay here.
Unless you want, unless you want to.
Hey, and thanks everyone again for coming and like, and really polite and thoughtful input.
Yeah, well, because unless you're interested in what we're gonna say.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
There's this proposal.
It seems like they have their mind made up before they.
Should have brought you statues.
No, I mean, I, it's my, I like.
Because a lot of them, they're straight, they want it with alcohol. I got drunk, it's happening, but I want to get here. Because I'm against the alcohol. You know, or whatever. Yeah, I, you know, it's fairly, not, not.
Yeah, I just think you were ignoring me.
I can, I, I'm fine with all Bruce, we can have it. Yeah, but that's okay, they're not really drinking, yeah, they're gonna have a cuddle.
Net, why don't you move down here? If you guys would like to stay, then please stay, but if not, if you wouldn't mind moving on into the hallway.
Go away if you want to stay.
Okay, so, oh, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm staying.
So are you here for the bike? You can talk about the bike, all right, so.
Because I haven't talked, I haven't.
Yeah, no, that's fine. So, so what we'll do is we're, we're gonna, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we're gonna come out of our recess here. And let's, I think we're fine. It wasn't official, we didn't vote it in, but we do have, next thing on our agenda is the proposed multi-person passenger bikes potential serving alcohol.
And I just typed pedal tavern.
Pedal tavern, please. Pedal tavern, sounds good. I know that we did get an email from.
We voted?
Yes, and, and he was looking like trying to answer some of our concerns, and I think that, you know, we can, at a later date, we can go through those one by one. But maybe we can just enter the email into the, just attach it with the minutes to Barbara. But Annette, did you have any comments?
Uh, no, I was just, because we had our manhandled rail trail committee last night and I said I was coming to this, so I could find out if anything was going on. Oh, and it's eagle, my bad.
I have some questions for you.
Okay.
So I just wasn't sure.
And what's your address again?
Thirty-three Leonard.
So I'm sorry, I, my fever maybe getting to me, but, what are we doing with the pedal thing?
Nothing.
Nothing, that's, yeah.
As of right now, we're just discussing.
Oh, all right. I thought you said we were gonna do something and.
Oh, no, I, I was just saying, it's on, it's on our agenda, we got the email.
We'll put that in through the minutes.
Annette, Annette came to find out what the status is with us.
Right, no, I remember, I was, I was.
You were here for that part?
Yes.
Okay. And, and so the status with us is he has come to us and we laid out quite a few of our concerns.
Drinking.
And that was, that was, the email response was the reaction to some of the concerns that we brought up. And, and so the way that we left it with him was that he was gonna show us that we, none of us have actually seen, or might have seen it, but not up close. So that's, that's where we left it, so.
That's, yeah, we, yeah, we're, I mean, my comments are fine, or I don't want drinking on board.
So my question is, he claims that, that he has the approval of the manhandled rail committee.
Yeah, with no mention of alcohol.
Oh.
He says he. Riding the bike thing.
Pedal, just the pedal tour of the breweries.
And you were like, oh, that's fine.
And they said, that's fine.
Okay.
But then suddenly when he came further, it was like, oh, this is gonna be drinking on board, going to all the breweries. So, yeah, that was the concern of the committee, was why did, you know, that he came to the committee saying it was just a, you know.
Because he's using you guys as an endorsement.
Exactly, yeah. And, you know, we endorse without alcohol.
Okay.
Well, can I, can I ask you more about your endorsement? In other words, so.
Well, I shouldn't say we, because I wasn't on the committee then, but I just know that that, you know.
It was.
Is it an actual endorsement or is it more of a, an objective statement saying that yes, this vehicle fits on the bike path?
Yeah, I mean, it wasn't unofficial, yes, you can do this. It was basically, yeah, that looks kind of nice and, you know, a couple, you know, it's, sure, you know, if, if it fits on, and supposedly everything fits on the trail with still room for people to go by, that it was perfectly fine, you know, joy if you bring in, you know, people into town.
Sure. Counselor say?
Is there, are there any current regulations, sorry, I'm gonna, I'm gonna type this on the, sorry, are there any current regulations regarding allowable width of vehicles on the bike path?
Not that I know of, it's just motorized, I think, you can't.
So if you, if you drive a, if you have something that takes up the entire width of the bike path.
I don't think there's a regulation.
All right, so theoretically someone could ride a bike down the path that's the entire width of the path, and that's okay. Okay, no, you should probably get the chair, because.
I mean, logic would tell you that if you have a stripe down the middle.
Yeah, you stay with it.
That rules apply, that you have to stay on one side of the stripe.
Right, well, I mean, that's a question of mine, and I mean, it's also a concern of mine, sorry, logically, sorry. It's not the clerk and.
And ask questions and think at the same time.
Yeah, and I can't even think when I'm not, when I'm not typing, so. So one of my biggest concerns is, okay, so this vehicle fits on the bike path, sure, so like it doesn't, or actually technically it goes over a little bit, you even admitted the fact that it hangs over by a foot or something like that.
And you could go into the grass, yeah.
So if you're traveling down the bike path, and so say I'm riding my bike down the bike path, or jogging, or walking my dog, or whatever, and this vehicle, this, this multi-person tavern, sorry, this pedal tavern is coming up the other way, I have to stop and move off to the side and wait for them to go by?
They're, I think they're supposed to stop.
They need to be on one side of the stripe.
How is that possible?
I think, I think what he said was, that if he, when they, we got it, yeah, I think it makes sense for us to see it on and at the trail, I think, would make sense. I believe what he said was that as oncoming traffic is, is coming, he can pull it, so the, the wheel is on, on the edge of the path, and so the seats are hanging over the grass, and that it affords a lot of, like, plenty of room for passing. So I think, I think we do have to see that.
Yeah, I mean, if I'm flying down the bike path, like, in my, in my.
Watch out, East Hampton page will complain about you.
But if I'm riding, if I'm riding down, you know, the bike path, like, how long does it take them to move over?
That's a good question.
Yeah, especially when you're, you know, the curves and.
And, and do I have to stop the, the speed or the, the rhythm of my bike riding in order to accommodate them?
You see, I think they're supposed to start.
Again, they should not at any point be over that yellow line.
I agree with you, and it sounds like they will be, because it's nine feet wide.
I don't, I'm not, I'm not, I'm, I don't wanna be, I'm not gonna be contrarian here, but I think that, you know, someone, someone walking their dog on a leash would pose the exact same problem.
I agree with you, and that drives me crazy, when I'm riding my bike and I'm basically looking like I'm gonna get WWE clothesline by, by a leash.
And they have their earbuds in, so they can't hear.
Right, yeah, and I'm like, on your left, on your left, or whatever, or, yeah, no, I, I don't disagree with you that that's equally objectionable.
So, I mean, I think, so, like, my, I think my ultimate, you know, red line will be, or green line, or center line.
Yellow line?
Will, you know, be, see this, see this thing on, you know, because I honestly, I, I personally don't have an objection to, you know, having a pedal tour of the breweries. I, I think, you know, where I am more apprehensive is having alcohol being served on. That for me seems like a.
Recipe for not doing.
Like, I get it in big cities, I don't know if I get it here.
Yeah.
Because in big cities, you're staying in hotels that are in walking distance, you have a captive audience that doesn't have to drive to it. I think that's a big distinction. But then again, like, I think we have these great breweries that could, it could be a really cool draw for them, it could be, I mean, and it could be, so I think, I think us seeing it. us seeing it makes sense. I think us coordinating with the bike path committee makes sense, and I think, you know, moving, you know, not rushing, especially around the public consumption, that piece is the tricky one for me.
Well, and I think Kelly from the licensing board, she's going to be in coordination with the bike, with the bike, sorry, I mean, there, this is not as simple as just writing an ordinance. This is, there's multiple layers, as detailed last time, involving liability and like...
Oversight.
And, yeah, it's not licensed, serving to a minor, liability involving, like, someone who gets off and gets into a car crash or something, they're not liable. I mean, it's more than just saying, oh, we're going to write, we're going to include in the ordinance that a multi-passenger, a multi-passenger bike is allowable for non-operators to consume, so I think it's, I think it's just complicated.
I also think, wasn't he saying that there was a point in time when they would actually be on Cottage Street or something?
Yeah, that's what they're going to end, I think they're going to end at, no, Union Street, I think they're going to end, that's where they're going to drop them off, and then...
That's almost a deal breaker for me.
Well, it's, I mean, it's...
To put it on roads is...
I mean, that's going to be a challenge for him, or for them, I mean, that's, but, I mean, I...
Well, it's also not East Hampton, but I don't know if I can necessarily endorse knowing that they're, that they're planning to go the wrong way on Route 5. I mean, he told us that their plan is to just go the wrong way in the bike lane, and that the Holyoke Police will not have a problem with it, but I don't necessarily know if I can endorse a vehicle that is starting out from a sort of point of origin where they're doing something, A, that's illegal, and B, potentially dangerous to the passengers to that, and then with the intention of coming into our city. So that's another thing, too.
I wasn't aware of that.
Oh, yeah.
Because I thought, I thought they were just going to cross over to the bike lane on the opposite side, you know?
I think, what, you think that was crossing state law?
And what's that, that's 50 mile an hour speed limit?
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know...
So, so how about this, how about, because there's still a lot of what-ifs here, how about I email him and try to set up a time for the committee to go take a look at it, and then we can...
Road trip?
Yeah, and then we can, after we...
Meet at, like, New City or something and discuss it.
Yeah, yeah. Sure.
Objection to that.
And, and so then we can, you know, instead of like hypothetically, we can, we can look...
Yeah, these are just my concerns.
Yep, no, absolutely valid, 100%, so, and I think that I can reach out to him and try to set up, find a day for, that'll work for everybody. We'll advertise it as a public meeting, so anybody can come, and we'll go from there. And, does that sound fair?
Yeah.
I think that's more than fair.
Okay, anything else that you guys want to discuss around this before we, I think the other item on our agenda, we can just hold off, there's no press on that, so, I know that Counselor Korf is not...
Really low.
You're feeling low on the weather, under the weather.
I just want to live when I get home.
There you go.
Always technically under the, under the weather.
We generally are, unless you're in a plane or on a mountain.
Right.
Yep.
There's something way up there.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I think, I think it's fair, I mean, I want to make it clear for the record that my concerns are my concerns, but I think we need to do both, do our due diligence, as well as allow him to, you know, fully...
I have not made up my mind, I'm just, you know, trying to gather some information for you, so. All right, I would be happy to...
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.